Special Board Meeting of the Board of Education for December 6, 2022 is called to order. I want to welcome Mr. Cruz. The purpose of tonight's meeting is to resume hearing your appeal to the final decision on complaint number 2022-04 in accordance with the board policy 4.50.032-P. The district follows certain procedures for a resolution of formal complaints by students, parents, guardians, and people who reside in the district in order to resolve formal complaints in a fair and timely manner. On September 6, the board met in a special meeting to hear the complaint. During the meeting, the board requested, and Mr. Cruz agreed, to put the decision to uphold or not uphold the superintendent's decision into abeyance until there was a corrective action, corrective plan in place to ensure a site council at Harriet Tubman Middle School. If during this meeting, issues pertaining to confidential student record arises, we will need to move into executive session after the first, after first addressing in a public meeting that components of the complaint do not pertain to confidential student records. If that happens following the executive session, we will return to a public meeting to vote on your complaint. The board received an update on October 15 and December 1 on the progress of a corrective action plan for a site council at Harriet Tubman Middle School. If it's all right with Mr. Cruz, we would like to ask Dr. Proctor to summarize with the board what has been done to address the concern raised in September.
Before everybody gets going, can I just state that it's, it may just be me, but it's hard to hear Gary? So if there's a way that we can get the mic situated so that I can hear clearly, because it was a little jumbled for me, and I don't know about everybody else.
Okay.
And I couldn't hear us that either, sorry.
Say that again?
You're, you're still really faint, even though I see the mic right in front of you, which is odd because before the meeting, there were some people who were really clear. So I don't know what's going on.
We try and get it worked out.
So you were just clear, you, you were just a lot cleaner.
I'm good here.
Gary sounds like he's in a fishbowl.
Is that, is that better?
It's, it'll work.
Oh, maybe it's just my voice.
Get out of that fishbowl.
No, it's not. I'm concerned that, and the only reason I'm, I'm really speaking is I'm concerned that I'm not going to be able to hear the testimony, and I want to make sure that I can hear everybody when they're talking.
Gotcha.
When he tapped on it, we could hear that he was tapping on that mic. So we could unplug, we can unplug this mic and see.
Yeah, so whoever is talking right now, I can hear you crystal clear. But I can't really hear Gary.
He's farther away.
Sitting the furthest away in the back of the room. How about now?
Can you hear us now?
Is it, is it better? No better at all? Nope. He said he's speaking clear, right?
I'll just, I'll just do the meeting.
Can you hear, can you hear Brian? Go ahead, say something, Brian.
Can you hear me? Hello?
Yeah.
I can hear that. I'm sorry that for everybody that's here, I want to say that I'm sorry that we're having these technical difficulties. But I think it's important that I hear, you know what I'm saying, that we hear everybody.
Herman, can you hear me back here?
No, not really.
Are the other directors hearing?
Although I can see Karanja, so it went, it went directly to Karanja when you did that. It just didn't, um, the vocals just weren't clear.
How about now, Herman?
That's better.
That better?
All right.
Trying out Gary?
That's good.
How about Gary?
Testing, testing.
I mean, I think this is as good as this go get. Let's, I'll just, I ain't got nothing else playing in the background, so I'mma listen tentatively, well, carefully.
All right. First of all, I just want to say hello to everyone. It's good.
I know Karanja said something, but all I saw was him waving.
You didn't hear me?
I barely heard you, Karanja, but I did see that you was waving. I thought you was trying to get a party started or something.
We're gonna get another mic. Try that.
Sorry, is, is there a microphone near Terry and whoever else is over there? Because whenever you speak, it's crystal clear.
No, it's not, it's just a computer.
That's a short one.
This is, this microphone is reading it because they can hear clearly over here.
Oh, no, that's, this is muted.
We're a few years into this.
I know anybody watching us go be like, they got all that money and they can't buy a good mic.
About now, check one, two. Do you hear this, Herman?
So just anticipating that when we get to the second session, if we don't have mics around, it's gonna be hard for us to hear potentially.
Right now.
Can you hear now?
Oh yeah, that's great.
Okay.
All right.
There we go.
Awesome, awesome. All right, so do y'all need me to start from the beginning?
No, sir.
Okay. So we're gonna ask, so we're gonna ask Dr. Proctor to summarize the board, uh, with the board at, um, what has been done to address the concerns that was raised in September. So we go turn it over to Dr. Proctor.
Thank you, Director Holland. Can you hear me? All right, great. So what I want to share is an update regarding the corrective action that was prepared and reporting on the progress of that corrective action for a site council at Harriet Tubman Middle School. The corrective action plan wanted to, had a few things to aim to ensure is aid of a site council is seated, uh, conforming, uh, conforming, excuse me, to board policy that Harriet Tubman Middle School conducts regular assessment as required by state law and district practice to inform the site council and the school continuous improvement planning process, that there is a parent involvement plan and a parent-student compact as required by Title I, that a plan for an iterative process for the skip or the school improvement plan to be shared with site council as outlined in board policy, and to either confirm or review whether or not Harriet Tubman Middle School hosted a family meeting on March 10. As to the issue of whether Harriet Tubman hosted a family meeting on March 10, staff was unable to confirm a meeting in fact took place. And then we have a list of actions that have in fact taken place and are in process to continue to take place at Harriet Tubman Middle School, satisfying all of the elements that I had shared previously. Some of these include, um, you know, the standing up of a site council, going through the process to identify members for the site council. The first site council meeting occurred on October 6, 2021, and subsequently had other meetings where they reviewed the OSAS data and also the skip. And so if you look at the memos, you will see, starting from September 9, where there was a back-to-school night, September 13, there was a staff meeting, voting for site council teacher representative, September 15, another back-to-school night to provide ballots for voting for the site council for parent representatives. That same time, the family involvement Title I meeting and compact occurred. Updates were made to the school improvement plan, um, with, on September 30, and then subsequently on October 6, October 3, site council member meeting was announced. As I said before, the actual site council occurred on October 6.
Just, it actually occurred on October 19.
Uh, October 19, yes, 4:30 PM, thank you. So it was, there was a span of events that happened between October 6 and October 31. The actual first site council meeting occurred on October 19. And as you could see, that there are plans to continue with the practice with the site council by, um, you know, reviewing, you know, continuing to review data, have these meetings, and looking at the possibility of doing a remission for the family improvement plan. Basically, I didn't want to read it verbatim to you, but you have the memo, and I'll turn it over to Margaret Calvert to share any other additional detail that, that we need to hear.
Yeah, I think, um, thank you, Dr. Proctor. I think that there are a couple pieces I just want to highlight. One is, um, I know this is a, we talked about this quite a bit at the last meeting, and, and I want to extend apologies to both Mr. Cruz and the board. Then in the original complaint response, it indicated the meeting had occurred in March of last year, and we were unable to, um, to confirm that, and, and that was in, um, so I just want to correct that error and apologize for that upfront. And then I think that other piece that I would say is that this is, there's an ongoing process that we're working through to continue to engage with the site council and with families at Harriet Tubman around, um, both services, supports, to have a guiding council to help think through both family engagement and, um, and looking at a variety of student improvement and school improvement goals, as well as student performance throughout the school year. As Mr. Cruz had stated earlier, that this had been a request in place for a number of years, and that there was concerted effort this fall to, to get those into place and to get those, those working. There is a site council website that has both the minutes and agendas, units, and upcoming meetings posted, which is, again, part of the concerted effort to engage with families around continuous school improvement.
All right. Mr. Cruz, would you like to say anything?
Yeah, thank you. I just want to, first of all, I appreciate everyone's efforts. And I want to just reiterate, I am not the enemy. I'm not the enemy. And I don't want you guys to, uh, to look at my complaints to be like, okay, oh, here's another Karanja complaint or anything like that. But I, I want you to, uh, look at it with some humanity, um, and look at it from a lens of, uh, I'm, everything I'm saying is, you know, deep down inside, everything I'm saying is, is, is not wrong. So, um, do you want to be on the, on the side of going against something that's good? Or do you want to be on the side of good? So I just want you to, to think about that. So for the record, um, I requested the site council in September of 2021. As you can see in the records, um, the site council was voted in in, uh, 2022 of September. So it took a year, even though I had made several requests during that year time of even nominating certain teachers and, um, certain parents to reflect the demographics of the school. Ironically, um, the vote took, the nominations took place, and the vote took place really fast, uh, within a day or so. But now the demographics of the site council does not reflect the demographics of the school. So I'm a little concerned about that. Also too, um, I understand that we were in a scramble to try to get some understanding of how the site council is operated. And one of the things I, I want you guys to realize, the things that I'm bringing up, if I'm bringing up things, something in the complaint, it's not for us to check the box in sense of for compliance, but it's to look at what is best practice. So, um, best practice is not having a site council for one hour. So we had a couple of site council meetings, but it was only for one hour. We cannot get a lot of business done in one hour. So I don't know, um, whoever was the team that created the, the, the protocols and, and the guidelines of the site council, uh, but one hour is not best practice. And then also too, it's, it's a number of teachers that are involved in the site council, and that is going to be an extra budget cost for the school, because the teachers get paid to be on the site council, but we as parents have to volunteer our time. So, uh, even though we're discussing school, um, business, but there's people that's being paid to discuss school business and people that are not being paid to discuss school, school business, so that's uneven, that's not really fair as well. Also too, for the record, um, I had requested a Title I family engagement meeting, which was supposedly, was supposed to be the March meeting that had, did not take place last year, which is a Title I meeting. Again, this is best practice. Best practice, if you look at a number of different schools across the country, they actually have a Title I family meeting. It's just focused on Title I. It's not infused in a back-to-school night. A back-to-school night is more so to understand the curriculum, understand the, the syllabus, what is going to be taught throughout the school year. But if you're trying to mix a Title I meeting in the midst of us trying to understand what is going to be happening in the school year, uh, to me, that is not best practice. So even though there's a check-in-a-box stating that it was a Title I meeting within the back-to-school night, um, I still do not have the information that I would like to know more about what Title I, how Title I funds is being used within the school. Also, for the record, um, uh, first of all, I appreciate the apology, um, of, of the meeting that did not take place, but I'm, I'm still just curious of like, like, where did the information come from? Like, how did it like just come in here to, to say that it was just a March meeting? I'm, I'm just really curious. Like, was it, like, did it come from you, or was it another source? Like, I'm really kind of confused on that.
So we asked for their, uh, we asked if there had been a Title I meeting, and, and we asked the administration if that, if that had occurred, and what they shared was the points that I had shared with you. So what, what we, so that was, that was, that was the source of it.
All right. Great, okay, so do board members, do you have any follow-up questions for Mr. Cruz or Dr. Proctor?
I guess my, my question would be, um, Mr. Cruz, do you feel, aside from maybe having their meeting scheduled too short a time, do you feel like site council is being set up for success? And by that, I mean being set up to really do the work that you have outlined needs to be done, and it's really about student achievement and digging into the data and instructional practices and all that?
To be honest, I really think it's been set up just to, to check the box. You know, it's one, it's only set for one hour. Like, it's, okay, we, we have site council now, so we can check the box and move on.
That seems like, if that, I mean, especially as it's just getting off the ground and you guys are identifying sort of what you're looking at, so it's like, that would be a reasonable request. Have raised that directly in, within the setting?
And we also have state guidelines in terms of what site councils, uh, how the composition of a site council needs, what it needs to look like, how it needs to operate, and so we are also responsible for ensuring that we're meeting state guidelines.
Got it.
And Mr. Cruz, I know, you know, you're coming about, y'all are there and not paid to talk about school business, you know, that seven board members are volunteers and unpaid, and that, that has been a genesis of a lot of conversation around if, if people who are board members, if people who are on the CDRC, if people who are on, um, the climate group and the racial equity group, like, where are places where we can stipend people, because we recognize that there is an opportunity cost when people volunteer for these sorts of really important roles? And that's a, a bigger conversation that we've been, we've been thinking about, thinking about, of how do we better fund those volunteer roles so that we, we can have some more equity? So that's a really great point you're raising, and, and we haven't figured out an answer to it yet, um, but it's definitely something that is, is recognized as a problem, and, and I think we need to continue to have those conversations.
You think that could be a state deal?
Yeah, it'd be great if the state, but then again.
I actually just talked to Stanford Children about that today with regard to board members, because it's a serious impediment to getting the representation that we need.
Yeah.
Any other board questions, uh, to, for Dr. Proctor or Mr. Cruz? Any board comments?
So I have a question. It looked like the, um, just in the schedule, all the activities leading up to it, that there's not yet a schedule for the rest of the, the year, or am I misreading that?
There is, there is a schedule for the rest of the year for site council.
Yeah, I'm looking at, like, it says, the documents we got, it says November 4th, meeting scheduled for site council for the year to be announced. So is, is, and then I went to the link and I didn't, it's actually a link to the members of the site council, not to the dates.
There's a, there are two different links. Director Edward, uh, Brim Edwards, so if the, if you go to, um...
I went to the November 4th link where it says dates have been added to the site council, and then there was a quick link, but it, it was actually the members.
It's on October 6. If you're on the October 6 one, there's one that goes to the webpage. If you click on that, it will take you to the Harriet Tubman homepage.
Oh, it's, future meetings are publicized on this document.
And then if, it's on the website, the meeting schedules is posted on their website. So it's the, it's the, and then there's a link to that, to, so they're, they're, they're the first, essentially the first Wednesday of the month for the remainder of the year, the school year.
The, my other question is, what, what decision would the board be upholding or, or affirming or not affirming of the, of district staff?
So the vote, so there are four things that we'd be voting on. Number one would, is did this, did not have a site council, and that there is a correction action plan in place. The second one is at the time of the formal complaint, Harriet Tubman Middle School was not, was not designated as a school that needed either comprehensive support or targeted support under Oregon law. The school conducted regular self-assessments as required by state law and district practices. However, due to the pandemic, state testing was suspended in 2020 and 2021. The third vote is did not have an annual family meeting for 2021, 2022 under 7.10.041/AD, and B, had a parent involvement plan and a parent-student compact as required by Title I. And then the fourth one is did not, did have a draft of the school continuous improvement plan and its iterative, uh, process and document.
I wanted to respond to board, um, Chair, Chair, Board, Director, excuse me. You had talked about the, talking about the best practice of site council, and I want to build on what Dr. Proctor mentioned. She said, uh, have to follow state guidelines, but I want to reiterate that the, the length of time, uh, that doesn't have any type of guideline, state guideline. That, that's pretty much a, um, a practice that, um, a district would follow.
And that's something that site councils can make that determination and, and make that localized decision as far as the timing there.
So that was going to be my question. So, because, um, Karanja, you've said, um, a couple times about, you know, just mentioning the, um, the best practices. What are the, because I know you looked this up. What are the, um, if we were to look at from a national level, um, some of the best practices around time? So in other, in other districts, um, that are roughly our size, serve our demographic, what are, what are their site councils? How long are they meeting? So what is a, um, a best practice for time?
From my experience, it's at least an hour and a half to two hours, for sure.
Okay, is there any other questions? Any other questions, uh, for either Dr. Proctor or Mr. Cruz? So I do, I have one question. Dr. Proctor, you had mentioned about the state, um, site council requirements. How do we monitor those, that those are getting?
Uh, there's a composition, um, that, that, a, a set of lists of, of what the composition of the site council needs to be. It's also, um, how the site council needs to function, um, and we monitor it by, you know, with our, um, Director of Student Learning and Family Engagement. And, um, and he is working directly with schools to ensure that schools are meeting the composition of it.
And so the way we're, we're doing that is, I'm, I collect all the documents and minutes and agendas from each meeting and the dates of which all the schools will be holding their site council, um, as well as being available for questions around what the composition should look like or could look like for each school, because each school has a different set of things that occur within a school community. So that's why yours might be an hour for a reason. Um, some, some schools have 75 minutes, some schools have 90 minutes, so it just varies. So that's something that can be discussed with Trevor, I'm sure, to see if they're being flexible in adjusting the time, right?
And that's a part of, um, the work that we do in, in supporting schools and ensuring that their site councils are best functioning.
And I don't think it's the purview of the board to set a time limit for the site council. I think that's up to each building. And I know that, like, at Llewellyn, I was not on site council, but when I was there, it was an hour because of the teacher schedules and having to do with the, the contract. So I, I don't know what the reasons are, but, um, I think that's a, as site council, you have some determination there to, to discuss amongst yourselves the length of that meeting. Is the principal the chair of the site council?
No.
No, it's...
It's you vote.
Who's the, who's the, who's the chair, though? It's not, it's not Trevor, it should be a parent.
Yeah.
So that would be sort of under the purview of the parent and the chair. And that's a part of the guidelines that they give us. Yeah.
Mr. Tibbs, do we have any other schools now that don't have active or site councils or formed site councils?
We, we're, we're about, close to 80% for, of our schools have a site council. So there are some schools that still need assistance.
Still working on it, okay.
So it's, I'm just going to go back to Gary's question, I guess, also. So it's state law that every school has a site council? So if we have 20% that in December still don't have them, do we have, is there?
Yeah.
Is there a plan for every, for the, maybe 20% to get in compliance?
It's, it's not every, it's not, it's not every school that is required. If the school is a Title I school, if the school is CSI, TSI, there are certain requirements for certain school types. Not all schools are required by the state.
Then maybe I can refine that. Are all the ones that are required by the state have functioning site councils? And this is partly, I think, you know, um, Mr. Cruz, I think, raised a, a great issue for us to look at. I'm glad that we're tracking it, so I'm just curious, are all the, the rest of the schools that are required to have them have what we would consider functioning site councils?
We do, uh, Director Brim Edwards, we could... Do, Director Brim Edwards, we could get the information back to the board after this meeting. We're not prepared to answer that today.
All right. So any other questions for Dr. Proctor or Mr. Cruz? All right. Any last comments, Mr. Cruz?
Yes. So I just wanted to, so if you look at the family involvement Title I meeting compact, I just want to kind of give you, paint a picture of what happened that night at back to school night. So basically, it was, I felt it was staffed, it's scrambling, trying to get a lot of parents to sign this form. So if you notice there, it says, received 32 forms. That's because, you know, people were scrambling to get, just to get signatures. To me, that's, that's not best practice, to me. Asking, are you guys going to uphold the family involvement Title I meeting as just that we completed that as a check in the box or is it, we're going to have a different meeting?
So here's what I, what I, I, I hear what you're saying and I acknowledge, you know, sometimes when a school or an entity is under the constraints of a corrective action plan, it has to be met by certain guideline, by the guideline. It definitely looks and presents as if things are done in a hurried fashion. What, what the site council, now that it's formed, has full scope to do is bring it to a vote within the site council if they want to, to revisit any parts of the process. So, you know, definitely it's worth perhaps raising it with the site council because now as an organized body, that is the body where they can make that decision.
If I may, I think I spoke with Principal Greer this afternoon as well and I think there, he is, he has talked with and worked with you some, Mr. Cruz, to say, is this something that will be revisited at a P T S A meeting as well? Like, there were conversations about where are some venues to share information as, and to your point is like, what are the appropriate venues? So he's, he's happy to, to say, is that a space to do that? And also to revisit, as Dr. Proctor is saying, is an appropriate venue is also for this to be discussion with site council.
All right. So we're going to go, move to the vote portion. The board will now vote on each of the decisions in the complaint, 2022 dash 04. So we're going to take these each individually. And for my, I want to get some clarification too, right? So when we are voting on these, are we voting on these as it was back then? So like, for instance, if, if we, if it was not a, if there wasn't a site council back then, we'd be voting as it was back then. Question is, so for instance, if, as an example, if I vote not affirm for number one, but recognize there has been corrective actions?
Well, I think the finding in the, at step two was that there was not a site council. So you are affirming that finding that there was not.
Oh, there was not a site council. Okay. But then can we, so we say that, do we say, but it has been?
And that there's a corrective action plan in place. So I think you can vote on that number one together because you are affirming the finding of no compliance back in July at step two complaint and reporting any that happens.
Okay. All right. So we're going to go by step for each one. So number one, we'd be voting that back then, we did not have a site council and that there is a corrective action plan in place. So we'd be affirming that?
So all the yes are yes to affirm.
All right. So we're going to take the vote to who's all affirming?
Yes, yes vote.
Say yes vote.
Yes to affirm.
Okay, yes to affirm, no to not affirm, right? Okay. All right. So all those that want to affirm or not affirm, number one, did not have a site council and that there was a corrective action plan in place?
That there is a corrective action plan in place.
There is, yes, thank you. There is a corrective action plan in place now.
Please indicate by saying yes.
Oh, please indicate by saying aye.
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 All right. So the vote, vote, the vote passes fixed, zero?
Did you vote, Gary?
Oh, aye.
Sorry, I learned this is chair, that you have to say it yourself.
Right, gotcha, okay.
I learned by doing the same thing my first time, so.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I just want to ask, do we need a motion in second for these votes? Just want to make sure I don't.
Thank you. All right. So for number two, let me go this up, was it again, was it? We're going to vote on.
To affirm.
To affirm, at the time of the formal complaint, Harriet Tubman Middle School was not designated as a school that needs either comprehensive support or targeted support under Oregon law. Under 6.10.010 dash P, the school conducted regular self-assessments as required by state law and district practices. However, due to the pandemic, state testing was suspended in 2020 and 2021. So all in favor, state affirming, state aye. All that's not affirming, state aye.
So we all, we have to do aye first?
Aye first.
Affirming that it did not have a designation, which implies that's why it didn't have a site council.
Correct.
Aye.
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 And then all who vote nay.
And then what?
Nay for those who don't affirm.
And any of those who don't affirm? All right.
I don't know that Julia voted.
Julia, did you vote?
I did.
Okay. So vote passed. Oh, we didn't hear it. Can you do it again?
I voted for it. And I have a, I have a question also related to it, though. Let's go, let's get through.
Hold on, Julia, can, can we finish the vote stuff piece and then we can, yeah, let's finish the vote while we're in that voting mode. Okay. Number, so that vote passes six, zero. Number three, did not have an annual family meeting for 2021, 2022. And B, had a parent involvement plan and parent-student compact as required. So we're voting to affirm that it did not have an annual family meeting for 2021, 2022. All that to affirm, say aye.
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 Despite that mysterious PowerPoint.
Julia, did you say? Julia, I keep, do you, do you say aye? Okay. All right, the last one is.
That passes six.
All right, that passes six, zero. Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Number four, we're voting to, did have a draft of the school continuous improvement plan and is interactive process and documents. All affirm, iterative.
Okay.
Iterative process and document.
But so what, what does that refer to? Like, did have a draft of the school continuous improvement plan and it is an iterative process and document? So did when?
At the time.
At the time.
The step two finding was, or decision was that it had, it was.
Okay, at that time, got it, okay. Sorry, got it.
So do we confirm, do we affirm that finding? Are all those in favor, say aye.
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 Aye. Aye.
All those that do not affirm, say aye.
Say nay.
Say nay.
Say a horse.
All right. Director Brim Edwards, do we hear? Maybe, maybe it's just me, but it seems like we don't hear you.
Yes, no.
Okay. All right. So that passes six, zero. All right. Now.
Is that the last?
That's the last one.
So I have a, I have a question. I'm wondering the, why we voted on the not having a T S I and a C S I designation? Was that so that P P S could technically say they didn't need to have a site council? I'm just wondering, because that wasn't part of the initial complaint. So I'm wondering why, why we voted, why we voted on that?
I think it's just.
It's not related to the site council. It's related to the Title I funding council. It is, it was, it was around regular, the type of regular assessments, Director Brim Edwards. So.
So that, I'm sorry, that relates to what part of the complaint? I'm just wondering why we.
It was number two.
The, I'm sorry, that says what?
The second part is around the, were there regular assessments done at the school?
Self-assessment.
Self-assessments done at the school. Complaint was.
I guess I'm, I don't, I'm not, why would we be voting on whether or not, though, it had a designation? I don't, I don't understand.
So based on a school's designation, there may be a requirement for the school to conduct a regular self-assessment to ensure that the school is able to make progress on the school improvement plan. School improvement plans are required for Title I schools.
So we voted that they have regular assessments, but they didn't do the other piece because they didn't need to because they're not T S I or C S I?
There were, there were two parts to it, Director Brim Edwards. It was, it, so the, I'm going back to the step two response was around a specific look at how we were reviewing student achievement.
Based on what?
Based on board policy. And there are two designations in board policy. One is whether or not a school is in continuous improvement as designated by the state. So there's one set of supports that are necessary if that is the case. And there's a second, all schools go through school improvement and self-assessment. And so there's a designation and we were stating that, that Harriet Tubman, that they, they were doing the regular assessments that were part of the policy that was what their school designation was. So that's what, that's why C S I, T S I is. And they were, they were not designated, so we followed the process that, for a school that was not in that designation.
Okay. So what I'm going to do is, if you have other questions, because we got, we have a six o'clock meeting, work session we have to get to and we have limited time to eat. So any other further questions? I'm just happy you go ahead and just email the appropriate person to do, to answer that question. So we're going to adjourn this meeting as of right now and then we can move forward to at six o'clock for the work session. And I think that's in the room. All right, so meeting adjourned.
Thank you.